We'll call the September 8th, 2022 Planning Commission meeting to order. And we will start with our Pledge of Allegiance if Commissioner Lowry could lead us. Thank you.
I am the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia, Texas, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All Commissioners are present with the exception of Commissioner Klostermeyer, who is excused this evening.
Thank you. Okay, moving to number four, public comments. This is the time we will take public comments on items that are not on the agenda this evening, that are generally within the purview of the Planning Commission. If you wish to speak, please keep your comments to three minutes or less. Do we have any non-agenda comments this evening? Looks like there are none. We'll move on to-
Chair, Clem, there is a gentleman. If you could come up to the microphone, please.
I have a comment regarding on this.
Is it an agenda item? So this would not be the time to comment on that particular item. Thank you. We'll wait till that item comes forward. Thank you. Moving on to requests for continuances.
None this evening.
And we'll move on to consent items. Item number one, the minutes of our July 21st, 2022 meeting. Is there anyone from the audience who would like to comment on the minutes? Seeing none, I will call for motion if we have one.
Chair, I'll make one. Yes, I'll make one.
I'll second.
Thank you. Call for vote. Item number two, the gauntlet encroachment, PA 2022-127, site location 2304 Cliff Drive. Do we have any presentation on this, staff?
This is a consent item. It's some improvements that are being proposed by a private property owner in the public right-of-way, and staff recommends approval. We can do a more detailed presentation if you need to.
Are there any Commissioners who have any comments on this item? Any, no questions? Ex-party communication? We'll start with Commissioner Wigan.
Zero.
None.
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 And none for me. This is not a public hearing item, but if there's anyone from the audience who would like to comment, please come forward and speak now. Seeing none, we'll move on. Okay, we'll call for a vote.
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
Item number seven, our public hearing items. At this point, I want to take a moment to just remind everyone of the rules of decorum. If we could allow everyone the opportunity to speak, we'll hold applause or clapping, any other comments, and we'll give everybody their three minutes. If you do have something to say, please take your opportunity to come forward when it's your turn. This is item number three, the tennis club at Newport Beach Project Amendment, PA 2021-260. Site location is 1602 East Coast Highway.
Madam Chair, due to the Levine Act, I will need to recuse myself on this item. I received a campaign contribution in excess of $250 from one of the co-owners of the property.
Okay, staff, please proceed with your presentation.
Thank you, Chair Clem, and good evening to the Planning Commission. My name is David Lee with the Planning Division, and I will be presenting the tennis club at Newport Beach Project Amendment. This is amendment to a previously approved project, and I'll go through those details in my presentation. First, I wanted to highlight the project location. The subject site is located at 1602 East Coast Highway. Adjacent rows include Newport Center Drive, Granville Drive to the north, as well as Clubhouse Drive. The subject site is currently utilized as a tennis club, which includes a mixture of tennis courts and pickleball courts, and includes a tennis clubhouse, locker room, and a parking lot. The adjacent uses include the Newport Beach Country Club Golf Course to the west, includes the Granville residences to the north, and commercial properties to the south and to the east. In terms of land use, the property is designated by the general plan as mixed-use horizontal and parks and recreation. Staff has analyzed the amendment pursuant to Charter Section 423 and Council Policy A18, and has concluded that there is no vote of the electorate that's required. In terms of zoning, the project is, site is zoned as PC47, which is the Newport Beach Country Club Plan Community Text. So the previously approved project was authorized by the City Council on March 27th, 2012, and this project included three components, which is the tennis club, the hotel, and the residential. The City Council authorized the reconstruction of the tennis clubhouse, as well as a reduction in tennis courts from 24, which were existing at the time, to a proposed seven tennis courts, which included one lit stadium court. The second component is the hotel use, which were known as the bungalows, and this is a 27-room hotel, like boutique hotel, and it included a concierge guest center and a spa and fitness center. And the final component of the approved project is the residential, which were known as the villas, and this is five detached single-family residences. This is the site plan for the previously approved project from 2012. As you can see, there is a tennis club highlighted in yellow, include seven tennis courts and the tennis clubhouse building, the hotel component, and finally, the five detached residential single families. This is a list of the entitlements that were approved in 2012. I'd like to highlight that a mitigated negative declaration, or MND, was prepared for the project for CEQA, and also that a development agreement was executed for a 10-year term. I'd like to point out that it was very recently that the development agreement was extended for an additional year to September of 2023. And finally, a coastal development permit was approved in 2018 by the city zoning administrator. So this is the proposed amendment, and this is a table that compares the previously approved project with the proposed amendment. As you can see, the three components remain as tennis, hotel, and residential. For the tennis component, the applicant is not proposing any changes to the clubhouse, but is proposing to add one additional tennis court for a total of eight tennis courts. For the hotel component, the applicant is proposing to add 14 hotel rooms for a total of 41 rooms. There's no change to the concierge center or the spa and fitness center. However, the applicant is requesting to add additional ancillary uses to the hotel, which include a performance therapy center, yoga pavilion, administrative offices, and common area. And finally, for the residential component, previously there were five single-family residences approved. There will still be five residential units. However, the applicant is proposing to convert three of the detached single families into three attached condominiums. This is the site plan for the proposed amendment. In yellow, I've highlighted the additional court that's being added, and that's part of the tennis club that overall remains the same, except for that one court. The hotel component remains also, however, there's additional 14 rooms that's spread out throughout the footprint. And the two remaining single-family residences, which are detached, are located in this location right here. The new buildings as part of this amendment are two loft buildings, and this is, these buildings contain a mixture of hotel units and the three condominiums that are being converted, residential condominiums. Here's a quick comparison of the two, the previous site plan and the proposed. The main thing I want to highlight is that the footprint is not expanding with this amendment. There's an additional tennis court, additional hotel rooms, but it's not going past the footprint of the previous project. These are the entitlements that are requested for the project approval. I want to highlight to you the development agreement. This is a second amendment to the development agreement for an additional 10-year extension. And the other amendments include general plan amendment, local coastal program amendment, and a plan community amendment as well, and this is for the development limit and development standards in those plans. For CEQA review, an addendum to the 2012 mitigated negative declaration was prepared by the Chambers Group. And the proposed amendment, the document concludes that the proposed amendment does not result in any new significant impacts than those that were, that were mentioned in the 2012 MND. We have our consultants from Chambers Group available tonight if they have any questions for them on the environmental review. Finally, staff has reviewed the project and provided findings, facts, and findings, and finds that the project amendment is consistent with the general plan and coastal land use plan, land use designations. The uses that are being proposed in the amendment are consistent with the approved uses of the plan community text. The amendment is consistent with the character of the 2012 project, as well as the surrounding neighborhood. And finally, the amendment does not affect any public views or public access of the Now, there's questions about pickleball, and so this is an additional condition that staff is recommending for the commission to add. It reads, "The pickleball courts shall not be permitted after the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the tennis clubhouse and spa and fitness center unless the property owner and/or pickleball facility operator follows any and all City of Newport Beach general plan, municipal code, and/or applicable requirements in order to continue the use of pickleball courts." And this is slightly different than the memo that you have. We've added the word "unless" after spa and fitness center. So there's a slight difference between what's on the memo and what's on the PowerPoint, but this is the condition that the staff is recommending. Therefore, staff is recommending to conduct a public hearing, recommend approval of the tennis club project to the City Council, which is tentatively scheduled for the September 27th meeting. Just to notify the commission, this project, since it has a local coastal program amendment, it requires approval by the Coastal Commission. So if it's approved by the Planning Commission and City Council, it will need to be submitted to the Coastal Commission for review and approval before the project is deemed valid. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm here for any questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Are there any questions for staff from the commission? Okay. Omar?
Thank you for that. Staff, you added in this other condition for us to review and approve. What is the city, I mean, pickleball's new. What is the city doing now for new projects that have pickleball? What is the outlook? What are the parking requirements? What are the sound requirements? Like, how is the city handling these on a case-by-case basis going forward?
That is a good question. First of all, the applicant isn't proposing pickleball in his application, but we felt this condition was necessary to kind of address some of the concerns about potentially allowing pickleball in the future. We haven't examined this project for inclusion of pickleball. That being said, you know, we have a limited experience in pickleball as well. You know, the city has created one court over in the Venedetta Canyon Sports Park, and there is adequate parking there. We're also in the business of actually creating some additional pickleball courts up in the Newport Coast area, near the Newport Coast Community Center, and there's a very large parking lot there. It's just repurposing existing facilities that are there. The only thing I can really respond to is that, you know, there is the ability to put four pickleball courts on one tennis court. And so if you think about a conservative occupancy, if you will, you know, in essence, you've got four times the traffic, potentially four times the parking. And we all know that noise is a different issue with pickleball than it is with tennis. And so these are the issues that we haven't examined with this application, but those are the basics that I would see.
And is tennis is parked at four per one court? I read in the, in the application. Is that right?
That's the case, yes.
Yeah. Okay. And so does, do we have a parking count for pickleball? Is it the same? Is it 12 then per one court?
Yes, that would be the case.
That would be the case. Okay. And so that, this application, just so I'm clear and everybody's clear, this application is just tennis courts?
That is correct.
Right. Okay. And so we're looking at this on the merits of just tennis courts. It's never to be converted in the future, and if we adopt this, if we adopt this additional conditional approval, that's what, that's what we're, that's what we're kind of focusing on there.
That's correct.
All right. Thanks.
Just so that I understand correctly, and I understand that it's on the merits of just this application. I guess what I'm trying to understand is how does this condition, will this property, if it, if they do propose to do anything other than just tennis courts, what will they be required to do? Will they be required to go back and do a, another application review? And what would that look like?
That is indeed the case. They would have to file for an application, and we would examine that application to see if it's consistent with general plan and the zoning and the environmental view that's conducted. There may need to be some supplemental analysis conducted. I don't know precisely what that looks like, but, you know, as an accessory use, it may be, at some level, it might be allowable. You know, beyond that, I don't want to speculate because it's really not part of the project tonight.
Okay, we will open it up.
Ex-party communications?
Sure. Starting with Commissioner Lowry.
I spoke with the property owner.
None for me. I spoke with the property owners.
I spoke with the property owner of the applicant.
I also spoke with the property owner and several of their consultants. Okay, we'll open the public hearing. Do we have a presentation from the applicant at this time?
Madam Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, I'm Robert O'Hill. I'm the managing owner of Newport Beach Country Club. So we've got a little presentation here. I'm not sure exactly how this works. Just start pressing. I press the red one on top? Okay. Let's see if I get this right. So our amendment, Plan B amendment, there's no change to the clubhouse. There's no change to the fitness center and the spa. But for the hotel, we've added 14 bungalows and lofts to get to 41 total. There's a hotel office that's been added, performance therapy that's been added, and a yoga pavilion. On the residential side of the world, we had to take out three single-family homes, and we replaced them with three penthouse condominiums on top of the loft building. We have 38 surplus parking stalls, and we have 554 additional parking stalls in Corporate Plaza West for weekends and holidays. This shows you what the project will look like from the golf clubhouse side of the world. The golf members were very insistent over the last 25 years during our involvement in getting, reaching out to them and getting their input, that there'd be only one-story bungalows facing the golf course. So what this shows is one-story bungalows on the golf course with the loft building behind it. So the loft building becomes like a barricade, if you will, from a noise standpoint, from tennis and pickleball, et cetera, to reduce the noise. We also have a very famous noise consultant that's been working with us on that. This is the new loft building, just replaced a single family. It has parking underneath it, and then three stories, and backs up to the pickleball tennis club. The top one is one of the penthouse condominiums, which has amazing views of boats coming in and out of the harbor, sunsets. We think it's gonna go for a bunch of money. This shows kind of the first floor. It shows where the office is, shows performance therapy. Sean can probably talk more about that than I can, but it is very for would-be athletes, senior athletes, and elite athletes. There's some incredible things, and Sean's very familiar with all this cutting-edge stuff that he intends to put in there. There's also a yoga pavilion. This is the top penthouse floor, and it's a pretty large unit. It has its own little private gym. It has a movie theater, has an office. It has a huge covered terrace. We're not quite sure what that might bring, but it might set a record for something that's not on the water in Newport Beach. That's our hope, anyway. This is a floor plan of the clubhouse, including the fitness center and the spa, the lap pool. So it's, I wish I had my little red pointer so I could point out the different areas, but there's basically an entryway from the spa that's down on this side, and then the entryway to the pickleball and tennis club is up in that parking lot off to the right. Little picture of the, where the cabana boy or girl would hang out to hand out towels and fins and goggles. That's a kind of a picture of the fitness center. By the way, the entire clubhouse spa has been through three plan checks with the city of Newport Beach. We have to get those plans dusted off and bring off to today's building code, but that should be built in as soon as possible. Little picture of the locker room. This existing clubhouse was built 60 years ago. The plumbing is in such bad shape, they desperately need a new clubhouse and a new locker room. And this locker room includes a steam bath for both men and women. This is an idea, I love this. This is some of the treatment rooms, and the treatment rooms are built over a koi pond. So when you're, when you're getting ready for a massage, you're looking down through a porthole, and you see koi with lit-up little lily pads underneath you. And when you're down on the pool deck and you look back, you see the porthole with the, with the koi swimming by. So that's, we like to believe that this is a minor amendment. This will bring a million, $300,000 to the city of Newport Beach, and I know the city is a very wealthy city, but we can all use an extra $1,300,000, even the city of Newport. We've looked at the suggested new conditions, and I embrace them. We'd like to thank the staff for all their hard and diligent work. They've been great to work with. And when Sean, and Sean and I bring in, right now, the city of Newport Beach doesn't have a process for pickleball courts. There's no, no process. So between now and the time that the clubhouse and the fitness center gets built, hopefully that process will come along, and we will abide by whatever the conditions are that the city decides to establish. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. There's a lot of supporters here. Sean has asked that they not come up one at a time and keep you guys here to midnight. So maybe if I could ask if our supporters of Plan B amendment could just stand up for a second? I thought we, we, thank you very much. Really appreciate your support. So that should cut down the number of speakers, but I'm sure that there's somebody that has some concern that maybe pickleball won't be continuing. Pickleball's there today. There's gonna be no change to any of the pickleball courts.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Don't go anywhere. You mentioned the conditions. I just want to clarify. You're, you are in agreement with the conditions as drafted, and also the new condition that was mentioned in the staff report today?
Correct.
Thank you. And then while you're standing there, I'll ask the commission if they have any questions for you. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so very much.
Sorry, what? I have one.
I have one. Right now, what do you guys do for, do you have any parking issues? And I know you have. I was just on vacation with my family a couple weeks ago, and I turned on the TV. I have 30 minutes of peace for my little kids, and CBS sports pickleball tournament, Newport Beach. I'm like, wow, that's pretty cool. But, you know, you're hosting big events. Do you guys have any parking issues? I mean, there's, we haven't had any complaints clearly, but I want to know, do you guys have a parking plan? Do you guys have overflow? You have big events, you're gonna have hotels. It's a different animal. What's, I didn't see anything mentioned in the report for that.
So a couple of weeks ago, there was a gigantic tournament. There's now a professional pickleball league. Sean knows a lot more about this than I do. And I think NBC was there, ESPN was there. They had like 30 television people setting everything up. The event was amazing. Lots and lots of people attended it. And because of the parking easement, non-exclusive parking easement over Corporate Plaza West, 584 stalls in addition to the ones that we have now, even I was able to find a parking stall showing up an hour late. So might had to walk a little bit further than normal, but I think Sean will be a better person to address this than me, but I, of course, when you have a huge tournament like that, you have thousands, maybe over 1,000 people that attended, there's, there's a lot of, a lot of, you know, you can't necessarily get in the front row like you normally can. You might have to park somewhere in Corporate Plaza West. Does that answer your question? Great. Great.
One other is, I guess for Sean, I'll probably ask what the, you know, the ratio is of pickleball use now versus tennis and then if it's gonna be included in the future, is there, I mean, you're just continuing this one now, but do you plan to come back in for pickleball to probably add based on the conditions?
Yeah, I just want to be clear about that. Sean spent a lot of money resurfacing all of the tennis courts, not all the tennis courts, a lot of the tennis courts to pickleball courts. So pickleball exists today. And before he did that, he asked the city, you know, do, is there some sort of process I need to go through? And they said, no, we don't have a process. So they got converted for probably a year now. There's, if you go there, any day you'll see lots of passionate pickleball players. And they love their club and there's also tennis players there. As a matter of fact, I think there's, ESPN has a televised professional tennis thing that involves, oh, the Oracle fellow, that's televised every week, I think. So it's a very successful club, didn't always used to be. Our, we've had three tenants go broke, so unable to pay the rent. And now we have a guy who is the real deal. For eight years, he's managed to make this a super success. And we're very, very proud of him and very happy to have somebody of his caliber be the operator of the pickleball and tennis club. He had the foresight of understanding that pickleball was, had a great future and jumped on it.
Are you bringing Sean up to speak? Do you, did you have questions specifically that you wanted him to answer? Okay.
Off the hook.
You're off the hook.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go ahead and open it up to public comment.
Good evening, Madam Chairman and Planning Commissioners and my landlords and members. Thanks for all coming. I'll be happy to answer your question about the parking if you like. I'm really lucky to have gone into this pickleball thing early. I'm, I guess considered as one of the pickleball experts in the country today. I do a lot of consulting for a lot of the clubs. My, my assessments are not always correct, but I can just give you my, what I know and what I've learned the last three years. I think we should all be proud that we were the first private pickleball club in the world in Newport Beach. And today, we are the largest. And there is no one in the pickleball world that doesn't know Newport Beach. So it was really possible because of, first of all, all my landlords and also the city to allow us to have these. In regards to your question about events, so we formed an event company to help us run events and we partnered with them because we were getting to a lot of requests. And yes, there are a few tournaments every year that probably do not belong in any private club. And as a matter of fact, ATP Tour, which is the professional tour for tennis, they are now starting a new pickleball tour. And in the next three years or two years, you will not see these events ever happening in private clubs anymore. They'll be held in places like Indian Wells or Flushing Meadows or Cincinnati. So this is our honeymoon stage of enjoying these in our backyard. The difference between tennis and pickleball is when you play tennis, if you go to, and if you do play tennis, you seldom see families go to clubs together or even couples. It's typically single, not single men or women, but they go separately to go and play. So the need for parking for tennis is, is much more, where in pickleball, it's just different. And one point I'd like to make is in the last one and a half years, the number of electric bikes that are in front of our club, it's enormous. So that's also probably helped us quite a bit. So, yes, I have been really worried and concerned, just like you may be concerned about what will we do with parking? So I have negotiated an agreement and have an agreement in writing from Irvine Company. I have 30-something spaces from them Monday through Friday. In addition to that, the club came with an easement with Newport Plaza West, which would get 500-something spaces on Friday evenings, Saturday, Sunday, and holidays. And I have a very, very close relationship with our Newport Beach Country Club operators, Eagle Ford, the pickups, and the general manager. And we work together very closely, especially on Mondays when they're closed, we get their parking. So do we, are we prepared for parking? Yes. Are we gonna have these big events when this transition happens and we go down to 30 courts? The answer is no. We don't have room to have events at that scale. So we've already announced to our membership, which they can also let you know, that we are, we've already told them weeks before that we're gonna be reducing these events. I hope that answered your question. I also like to point out that we, me as a club owner and operator, I'm here to really, you know, do my best to represent our community. We are a very strong community. And we support this plan because it's gonna allow us to preserve our club. And we feel it'll be much easier to work with a hotel operator to give them also some benefits with business in opposed to having apartments or lots of residence where they may not like the noise. In regards to noise, the noise of pickleball is getting lessened every single day. The equipment are really outdated or they're not, there's not enough, the, the level of paddles is very low. May I, may I continue?
Finish your thought, thanks.
So balls will be about 50% more quieter in the next year. Paddles have already come out in the market that are also much more quieter. So this noise issue that the whole country is facing, as you can see in scale, they're getting less and less every month because the equipment's getting a lot better. And I'm also with that. We also had petitions up to 2,000 people from our club and our neighboring residents that supported this plan. I just hope that all of my, the co-owners and the managing owner can finally join hands, get together, and let us run a beautiful club and we'll be very grateful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
Yes, good evening, Madam Chairman, Planning Commission members. I guess I'm okay. It's not gonna blow me up or anything, right? Anyway, my name is Paul Christ. I am a resident of Granville, Granville Community Association, which is immediately contiguous to the tennis club at Newport Beach. And I have played there over the years and, but don't currently play there as a tennis player and so forth. So I'm here as a representative of the Granville Community Association. I'm a former president of the Board of Directors and so they asked me to show up and just give you a couple of comments that we have relative to the application. Number one, we're, I want to assure you that we are very enthusiastic about Mr. O'Hill's plans and have been since we sat out in the middle of the day or middle of the afternoon or middle of the evening, whenever he was able to come and speak to us relative to his plans back in 2010, 2012. So we're well aware of it. Our concerns are, are basically two, and I have a third comment that I'll make, but our two, our two concerns are that there is, we are, we are impacted with a tremendous amount of noise from the pickleball itself hitting the pickleball paddle. And, you know, we are, without exaggeration, probably 75, 50 to 75 feet away at the closest point to the pickleball club and we get this noise consistently, you know, all, all day, all from 8:00 in the morning until 8:00 in the evening or whatever time they wind it up. And it's become a problem for us and we are fearing that our property values may be affected by that. So what I would like to propose is that an additional consideration be considered relative to the application that provides for a sound blanket, a pickleball sound blanket. And that's, you have one already installed at the Bonita Canyon Sports Park. And that could be a model for what could be accomplished with a pickleball court. Then the second consideration that I'd like to propose is that we've had a continuing issue over the years with excessive noise coming from pickleball events. And John Volteri mentioned the fact that they have events that are sometimes not related to the pickleball club itself, et cetera. And in those cases, typically someone within that organization uses a amplified microphone, amplified bass, sound music, amplified band, any number of conveniences that will provide, I guess, a so-called benefit to the event. But in our case, that sound reverberates through, may I continue?
If you could just take a few seconds to finish up.
Yeah. Okay, that sound can reverberate. So I'd like to propose a restriction on all amplified sound at the pickleball club. No microphones, no, no band. And then my third question was having to do with the surface area that's existing now and devoted to tennis and pickleball clubs. And will that existing surface area be renewed? And I can't answer that. That's a question.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
My name is Tracy Miller. I'm a resident of Newport Beach. And while not a club member, I've been asked to be here today to speak on behalf of a large contingency of club members who oppose this project but feel intimidated to speak up. Today, I will be reading their statement and will attempt to deliver it with the same passion in which their sentiment was conveyed to me. Members of the Planning Commission, while we are not here today waving our paddles and speaking passionately about what this club means to us like we were in the spring, it is not because our sentiment has changed. The reason we are not present today to voice our opposition and concern with the project is because the club operator, Sean Abdali, has threatened the membership by way of email, private texts, phone calls, and in group chat forums, that if we publicly oppose this project, we will be kicked out of the club immediately. The fact that we have been forced to anonymously voice our opposition to this project out of fear that we will be kicked out of the club and no longer be part of the community we are so passionate about should speak volumes about what this club means to us. With that, the following statements and it express the following concerns. Number one, to quote the club operator, Sean Abdali, from an email dated September 6th, "The plan for Thursday night guarantees our club to be preserved and I will have 30 to 32 pickleball courts to deliver to you." How can Sean make this statement when Mr. O'Hill's plan does not include pickleball and in fact, he specifically states in his submission that the pickleball courts will be demolished? Number two, if it is somehow possible that the tennis courts can eventually be turned into 32 pickleball courts as the club operator states, how does Mr. O'Hill's plan accommodate 128 pickleball players, the parking for those players, and the resulting traffic along with overflow parking and traffic disturbances that would occur during the changeover of court times, as well as the parking and traffic caused by hotel guests and residents coming and going? Number three, Mr. O'Hill stated in a town hall meeting with the members on September 7th that the pickleball courts will remain open for member use during construction, but in his own submission, he states, "Construction of the proposed project will begin with the demolition of the existing tennis and pickleball courts. Six tennis courts are to be maintained for use during construction." Number four, the club operator, Sean Abdali, states in an email to members dated September 6th that "we, the club, oppose any plan that eliminates our club, period." How can he demand we support this project when there's no pickleball presented as part of Mr. O'Hill's plan, which ultimately eliminates our club? Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Chair Climan and Planning Commissioners. My name is Brett Fierstein and this is my business partner, Ryan Chase. Our families have lived and owned property in the city of Newport Beach dating back to the 1920s and 1950s, back to when Ryan's grandfather operated one of the first paddleboard and kayak rentals on the bay. And my grandparents were some of the first customers of Crap Cooker. Brian and his wife, Brooke, are raising their two children in Newport Beach where they attend Newport Heights Elementary. Brooke is actively involved in her kid's education and active member of the school's PTA. My aunt lives in Lido Isle where my family and I regularly visit her and all of the wonderful things Newport Beach has to offer. Together, our families own a number of commercial, residential, and recreational properties throughout Newport Beach. As generational families with deep roots in the city, we have a strong desire for all of our properties to improve the quality of life of this community. As you may know, we own 50% of the tennis club property with the applicant, Golf Realty Fund, owning the other 50%. We are currently in an arbitration proceeding to determine if Golf Realty Fund has the authority to unilaterally process the planning application that is before you tonight. It probably goes without saying that we do not think Golf Realty Fund has the proper authority to process the pending application. That said, we recognize this is a private dispute between private parties and we are not seeking to involve the city. Unfortunately, arbitrations are never fast as one would like, and so we are not able to have this matter settled prior to tonight's meeting. That is why we are objecting to the proposed planning application tonight. It is important to us to be respectful of your time and we cannot thank you enough for all you have done under the planning staff of Simone Jurgis' leadership. We know how much time and effort goes into all these matters. Additionally, contrary to some of the rumors that are being circulated, Ryan and I are not looking to shut down the club. In fact, it's quite the opposite. I'm a pickleball player myself and after seeing how important this club is to its members, it has only grown our desire to find a solution that allows the club to remain, to grow, thrive for the long term. When reviewing the plans prepared by Golf Realty Fund, we are very concerned that we do not see pickleball courts on the current plans and only see tennis courts. The absence of pickleball courts is particularly troubling because we have heard from members that they were given assurances that the plans include pickleball courts, which is clearly not supported by review of the plans. Thank you again for all your time and all you do for the community.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Chair Climan, members of the Planning Commission, my name is Jim Mosher and I wish to speak to the general plan amendment that you're being asked to make a recommendation about tonight, which appears on handwritten page 60 of the staff report. My first comment about this is this is one of the most unclear general plan amendments, specification of how much development is allowed at this anomaly site, as it's called in the land use table. The purpose of the general plan anomaly table is to indicate the maximum amount of development allowed on each such parcel. This one indicates 3,725 square feet of development, whatever that means, eight tennis courts, and 41 hotel rooms. The staff seems to be regarding the hotel rooms as 1,000 feet, 1,000 square feet each, although when I look at the plans, every single room seems to be much larger than that. And in addition to the hotel rooms, there seems to be quite a lot of development that is being proposed. So I cannot tell from this whether there is any limit. Does 41 hotel rooms mean, I mean, can they be 10,000 square feet each? Does none of the other development count towards this? What limit, if any, is this placing on the development? Whatever that limit it is, even if it's just 41 hotel rooms at 1,000 square feet each, I have to question the city's green light analysis as to whether this proposal requires a voter approval or not. In its very simplest terms, Mr. O'Hill may have a sincere belief that the 2012 project was approved by the voters of Newport Beach, but it was not. In 2012, his project was approved in tandem with a 21,000-square-foot addition to the golf course clubhouse. And if the two together had been approved, they would have required a green light vote. Green light vote was avoided then by saying that this project was not a general plan amendment. So in 2012, we hear it's not a general plan amendment. Now, 10 years later, we're adding more development to it and we're being told now, we still don't need a green light vote. And the reason is because the previous one now was a general plan amendment and all we're adding to the general plan is a little increment to that. I don't think I have enough time to explain this in any more detail, but I did write it out for you and I hope that you had time to see that written comment that I submitted yesterday. In, in my opinion, this is the First Amendment. Everything you see here is being added on top of very modest development that was approved by voters and that is what is currently in the general plan, only the 3,725 square feet of development and 24 tennis courts. Everything else is on top of that and it goes far over the green light limits, so it does require a vote. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, Chair, members of the planning commission, Denise Albermann. I am not completely formally prepared to respond to this application and the proposed project. However, listening to it, I am aware that some sort of project has been pending for quite a number of years. I first would like to commend the staff for bringing up that there are some items associated with this use which are fluid, and it's not entirely clear that what the applicant is proposing and what's on the books is what we're going to end up with. And most specifically, the issue of pickleball courts. So pickleball is something, obviously, that's fairly new, and along with it, it is already being recognized that there are some impacts which are not consistent with impacts associated with conventional tennis. So it's very popular, that's fine, and perhaps the city does need to look to more and more opportunities to increase the pickleball capacity in the city, private and publicly administered. However, there are definitely noise issues, and also with the intense, and to commend the staff, the staff has pointed out that it is not thoroughly aware of or had the opportunity to study the noise issues. It's also clear in the various presentations and the statements of the various constituents that there is indeed a plan to use the pickleball courts and events, and to use this as an event that is potentially scalable to have additional impacts, not only for parking, but for safety of ingress egress and impacts to the surrounding area. So I think I would request that the planning commission fall back and really get a more committal characterization of what is in fact being proposed on the table. If the application and what's being reviewed and approved constitutes this multi-use plan with only tennis courts, then so be it, but not leave the door open to come back and say, "Oh, by the way, we've already got resurfacing, and we've got occupancy, and so whatever," and just try to do a spot zone, you know, ad hoc approval of a use that has a lot of potential benefits, but also, more importantly, a lot of unintended consequences. So I would request that the planning commission remand and get a more committal characterization so that what we're reviewing, this is not a liquid environment. We're proposing a substantial development here. Development's going to be here. It's not going to have its ROI in three years or five years. The development agreement is multi-year, so I would ask that the commission fulfill its responsibility to the community and remand it and take a little more diligent effort so we can be assured of a project that's compatible with the surrounding area. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
My name is Mark Sussin. I live at Granville as well. I am a Newport Beach resident. I practice law in Corporate Plaza. Colonel, I'm a high school graduate. Lived in Granville on and off since 1969 when they were built. I'm a pickleball player. I just sponsored the construction of two pickleball courts at the Jewish Community Center. I'm not new to the game, but I'm troubled by the game. I've sat here tonight and listened, I came here to listen, basically, and I'm more confused now than I was when I started. I saw seven tennis courts proposed, and then I heard 30 pickleball courts. I heard the applicant talk about seven tennis courts, but refer to Sean as one of the great pickleball operators. I think we're kicking the can down the road here. I think tennis is no longer in vogue. I think it's all about pickleball. And I jotted down some notes at the office today, in the event I did get a chance to speak. And by comparison to what we had here before, when we had the Ballwood Bay Club tennis courts, when I grew up here, there were 24 courts. People were playing singles and doubles, probably half and half, although I'm not a tennis player. That doesn't cause many cars to be parked in that parking lot. Parking was never an issue. If you look at the map now on the site for the pickleball club, there are 47 pickleball courts, 11 tennis courts, one fitness club, and one basketball court. I drive through that parking lot either to go home from the office or to go to the golf club where I'm a member, and that parking lot is a mess. There are cars parked in the white, in the red, everywhere you look, and to say that parking's not an issue is crazy. And that was a club that had the Adopting Guild Tournament, at least in my heyday when I was growing up. Now, I looked since August 31st, they had the regional qualifiers, the club championship scheduled, pickleball camp, the Susan B. Coman Tournament, another pickleball camp, the Takia Showcase Tournament, and another pickleball camp. Place is packed. Now, where these people are coming from, I don't know. They may all be local for all I know. They may all be coming from out of town for all I know. But it is packed every, every weekend. And let's talk about the noise. Okay, there are no sound attenuation green, whatever you call them, they go around the fencing out there, as far as I know. I've played at the Newport Beach Courts, very quiet. Here, there's green fencing that's wind fencing, I believe. I talked to Sean years ago and said, "What can you do?" He said he would do something. To best of my knowledge, nothing's been done. You can hear every strike of the ball. There are LED lights or some kind of lights that light the court that shine down the fairway that can be seen by the houses at Granville. The noise issue is nothing new to Newport Beach. We've had litigation already, and as I understand it, you closed down the courts over on San Joaquin and built the new ones. The new ones are great. Then you've got the traffic issue coming off of Newport Center Drive. I can't tell you how many near misses there have been, which I think Paul wanted to talk about, but ran out of time, when cars are coming in from Civic Center Drive onto Granville and go into the parking lot as people from Granville are exiting the community. I talked to the planning commission or the Transportation Department yesterday, and they're going to put a double-yellow line now to prevent that, and a stop sign. It's a mess out there, and the courts have not been good neighbors. And again, I think we're kicking the ball, the can or the pickleball down the court. We need to figure out what's going to happen with that property, because I've heard mixed reviews here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other speakers?
My name is Deirdre Machalsky, and I am a member of the pickleball club, and I love playing pickleball, and it's not going anywhere. In fact, it's going to grow more and more. I think that there is some confusion as we listen tonight for many of the people here tonight. There are 31 pickleball courts there now, and there will be 31 or 32 in the future plan. So it's not an increase in pickleball courts. I think that people are bringing up points that they are concerned about, and I think that everyone wants to work together to make this a cohesive plan. And I've been to a number of meetings, and I just would like to see things, let the ball roll forward. I just think we keep talking about this. I've been to numerous meetings, and I think everyone's passionate about it, and I just encourage the planning commission to help us to keep the ball moving forward here. I also get all of the emails. I'm a member of the club, and I have not seen anything in the emails or by Sean that was publicly telling people that if you don't support this, you're not going to be in the club. I've never heard that. I've never seen that in any of the emails. So I want to thank you guys for your efforts, and I just hope you'll help us to keep this moving forward, because pickleball is here, and those of us who play it, we love it, and we want to make it work for everybody. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
Hi, good evening. My name's Robin Moore, and in full disclosure, I'm a member of the club, and I do work there part-time. I would like to challenge anybody who has seen an email that allegedly came from Sean threatening anyone. I get all the emails. I've not seen anything of that regard. It's distressing to hear people come up and make an allegation when there's no support for it. We love the club, obviously. I've had the opportunity to discuss with many, many members. We've had Monday coffees and breakfasts where they are able to come and talk to Sean. He's shown the plans. We've asked for their input as to which plan they prefer. Every member that I have spoken with has liked Mr. O'Hill's plan. I've not heard any opposition to it from any of the people who have come to speak to us. So I just wanted to put that out there and let you know that a lot of the negativity is coming from anonymous sources, and there's nothing we can do to talk to people who won't come forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else who'd like to comment this evening?
Well, we can open it back up to the applicant to respond, and if Mr. O'Hill wants you to respond on his behalf, that's up to him. Are there any other speakers beforehand?
You can respond?
If you'd like.
Okay, well, I just want to make one comment. There seems to be a lot of confusion about the public vote for the general plan amendment. So back when there was a citywide general plan amendment, there was two previous attempts that failed. One for Newport Center that involved Irvine Company and Pacific Mutual and us, and we put up a bunch of money, and the city took a poll, said it's not going to work. We got 20 cents on the dollar back, and then later on, there was the general plan amendment that involved the entire city. Can't remember what year it was. It was a while ago. We worked very hard on that general plan amendment. I know that we weren't the deciding factor. Hoag Hospital was a huge player in that because they got a lot of extra square footage. But I do not believe that that general plan would have passed if it wasn't for the support of the golf club members, the tennis members, Irvine Terrace, Granville. The people that walked precincts to get that general plan approved made the difference. So that's the general plan that I say got a vote of all the citizens of Newport Beach. Thank you. If there's any other questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Mr. O'Hill, did you want Sean to respond as well?
Right.
Did you want Sean to respond as well on your behalf?
You want to respond? Yes. You sure? Yes. Okay. Tried to talk him out of it.
So, you know, my father's been in the business for 60 years, and if there's anything that I've learned is important to listen to your members and also to your neighbors. So I'd like to address some of the, a couple of concerns that, you know, our neighbors from the Granville had. Number one, regarding the noise with the speakers faced towards their Granville, you got my word that it will never happen again. I never knew that this was a problem, and my cell phone, if you ask my wife, every member in the club has my personal cell phone, and if anyone in Granville likes my phone, I'll give it to them. We'll definitely work with them. Granville residents are right. We did have a really big issue in a couple of events where it was really impacted, but none of us knew how pickleball was going to grow. We had no idea about the attendance we're going to have. No one knows how many spectators would show up, but all these things have been resolved because of our new contract with Irvine Company and also with the promise we've made, multiple emails to our members, which is really important to us, that we're reducing our events significantly. So they had very good points, and I'm sorry that they maybe felt that was not approachable, but I will personally give them my number and address those things. Thank you.
Thank you. Does staff have anything that they want to respond to? It might be worth a little refresh on the green light analysis. I know it's pretty clearly outlined in condition number five, the square footage and the other relevant counts, but...
Sure. Yeah, we can address that. You know, we've done the green light analysis. We don't agree with Mr. Mosher's viewpoint on the analysis. To adopt his point of view would suggest that the city council did not offer and approve entitlements for this club, and so we do believe the increase here with the general plan amendment is only 14,000 square feet, and that is pursuant to council policy. You know, every hotel room equals 1,000 square feet. So we're following city council policy to a T on this analysis, and it does not result in a vote of the electorate. Couple of other issues, you know, staff has not examined pickleball in this application because the applicant didn't request pickleball in this application. You know, the condition that we're putting forward here just allows and makes sure everyone is on notice that if pickleball is to continue beyond what is happening right now, then within this future project, it'll have to come through an evaluation process with the city, and that might include, you know, additional noise analysis and mitigation for noise, looking at traffic issues and the like. Another point I wanted to make is that there's been talk about this tournament and creating mayhem out there. I want to make sure everyone understands that the existing planned community text that was adopted in 2012 has a provision in there that requires that they obtain special event permits for any kind of events. I don't believe that that occurred, so we have an enforcement issue here with that. So that being said, I think going forward, if there is any additional tournaments, you know, we'll be in contact with Sean and Mr. O'Hill to make sure that they obtain the proper permits, because that process helps us understand the nature of the event, and it's properly managed and contained and doesn't create issues. And so I think there was an enforcement issue there. Let's see. I think that's all that I really had for you. If there's any questions, happy to answer them.
Thank you for that. I just have one point of clarification. I think we all understand that pickleball is not part of this application, but I'm just curious. I think some of the other commissioners asked this as well, but I kind of wanted to drill down a little bit further. For this project and for other projects, whether they're homeowners associations or, you know, other properties in the city that had existing tennis courts and wanted to convert them to date, since this isn't something that we necessarily have an outline process for, what does that conversion require, if anything?
It really depends upon how that tennis court was established. We have many communities that have tennis courts as part of a recreational amenity that was developed with, you know, the condominium complex, you know. I know Jasmine Creek has had tennis courts out there. We'd leave that to, it's a private matter. If the homeowners association wants to convert their tennis court into pickleball courts, you know, we don't see that as an issue. You know, there is a noise issue that can occur. The city's experienced that when we put in our first pickleball courts over in Benevee Creek along MacArthur Boulevard. We ended up going back and doing a noise analysis, putting up noise attenuation blankets on our own courts. So we've learned that lesson, and we're doing the same thing up in Newport Coast, although it's really not close to housing. But there really isn't a proposal to do that, because in reality, there's no building permit that's required. Think about it, just you have to re-stripe or resurface the court and so on. These private courts, it's left up to the homeowners association's devices. In this particular case, we have a use permit from the 1970s that speaks to tennis courts. And obviously, this was done back before pickleball even existed. We obviously have a general plan that speaks to tennis courts, and so, you know, obviously we understand there is a difference there, and there's also an intensity of use there. I heard a lot today about how pickleball might increase traffic, might decrease traffic. You know, we did have some testimony about maybe the parking requirement's less than tennis. We have no idea what the actual truth of any of that is. And so if we were to consider pickleball in the future, if the applicant requests it or the operator requests it, we would have to go through an analysis to see, you know, is it consistent with the entitlements that we granted today? Do we need to do an amendment of some kind? Do we need additional environmental review, additional traffic analysis, parking analysis, and noise analysis? And that would all occur if pickleball is requested in the future. Hope that answers.
It does. Thank you. And also just to clarify, I know you've said it multiple times, this is a recommendation to council, which also, if council were to approve it, assuming the recommendation is made here today, it also will go to coastal commission for review, so there's a multi-step process here. Okay. We'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commissioners for discussion.
So I can't help but take, the takeaway from this, as I review these conditions of approval and this site development permit, and try to package it up in my mind for what I'm used to seeing, these conditions seem awfully typical for what appears to be a very conceptual plan. And I was just wondering if maybe there was something that you could describe for me about what I heard, which was that this is already in third plan check for some other site plan? I want to try to tie this together, because I can't put together the tables, the square footages, the, this is supposed to be a site development permit that's tight, that doesn't have conceptual drawings, and... And I guess maybe we've gotten lucky that we've typically seen that level of detail. I don't see that level of detail here. I see comments in here about changing the width of the drive aisles to make sure that they're in compliance with fire and stuff like that. Is there any way that you could help me make sense of that?
Certainly, I'll try to. You, you are correct, these plans are fairly conceptual. They're not actually that much less detailed or more detailed than what was viewed by the city council back in 2012. Typically, we see more detailed drawings that come before because, you know, the applicant has taken the time to engage the architect, to take it to a more detailed level. And we obviously work with those applicants to, to ensure that as much as possible, we don't have to have conditions, you know, dealing with fire lane widths and the like. But, you know, in this case, we brought forward this application. I think the applicant wants to get the input from, from you and then the city council before they finalize those drawings. Now, the comment that you heard about the plan checks, you know, the applicant did submit the tennis courts, I'm sorry, the tennis clubhouse, as well as the five single-family homes, I believe, back in 2016 for plan check. Even in advance of having his coastal development permit being done, he did that at his own risk. And so, yes, there has been some more detailed designs that have been put forward through the building division. Obviously, there are some changes here, as you've noted here in the, in the description. You know, we've also had an additional round of building code changes. And so, when he said that he has to, he's acknowledging that he has to update all of those drawings to, up to the new building code. But, but you're right, it is a little less detailed than we might otherwise like to see, but we feel comfortable moving forward with the recommendation.
I guess that's, at the end of the day, I wanted to hear you comfortable that this isn't, this is going to be the, what we're going to see because there isn't some unknown buried in here from the plan checks that say that, hey, this drive aisle width doesn't meet the turning radius of a, of the, from the fire department. I don't know that we know that. And I didn't see anything in here that would describe for me that kind of detail that I guess I've just gotten used to. And it just led me to believe, to, to head down that road with that comment. And it's not meant as a slight in any way to staff. It was more or less, I thought I was looking at something that potentially was half-baked. And some of the conversation feels that way too, but I'll leave it at that.
Commissioner Rosen, if I may, you can be assured that when we go through the plan check process, the drive aisles for two-way traffic are 24 feet or 26 feet, depending upon what the traffic engineer needs it to be. And then, we, we can't issue building permits without proper access. And so, the fire marshal won't sign up on those drawings. So, those are items that definitely got cleaned up at the plan check if there's any deviations with these drawings here.
Yeah, just kind of my comments here is, is, you know, reviewing a lot of subject material here, but I'm, I'm, I'm good with staff's findings. I think they're pretty well thought out and documented. So, I'm good, good with, with how they came about the findings. You know, as Mr. Mosher pointed out, the general plan is, there's a lot of, lot of ins and outs there and, and some complicated numbers and things to put together. But I'm getting, I'm good with staff's explanation of that and believe that that, you know, calls, is within what the general plan calls for. I know there's, we all know there's, there's property, are there, between the properties' owners, there is disputes. But, but here, on Planning Commission, we're here really just to recommend or not recommend this plan. And, you know, that'll get taken care of as, as a, as a private matter. And hopefully gets taken out with, with, or gets taken care of with, with, everyone comes in agreement. But as, as of now, we're here just to look at the, the request here. I know that just, you know, times change in the 70s and, you know, 60s and 70s tennis was, was the thing. And, and I, I just know pickleball now, I look at the people from all, all different ages and it seems like that is, is not just a temporary thing, but something that's here to stay. Other jurisdictions where I'm on the other side of the dais on, I, I've seen pickleball just explode. And again, people all different ages and, and, you know, different athletic conditions, it seems like it's something that's very popular. And so, this, this, this seems like in, in talk over the, the last few years about, you know, communities needing more and more housing, which I think we all agree it does. But also, we can't give up on our recreation and other things. And we need to stick to our general plan and be for sure that these type of facilities are, are here for our, our residents. So, all in all, I'm, I'm good with this. I plan to vote in favor of this. And, and I don't want to take any time away from my fellow commissioners, but I will be happy to move agenda item number three with all recommendations. But I'll, if my other fellow commissioners want to speak more, I'll, I'll wait until they have it.
I, I second Commissioner Lowry's sentiment on the project, on the face of the project. I think it is actually a really, totally simple amendment. For the avoidance of doubt, and I want everybody to be really clear, if this is approved by us, it's approved by city council and coastal commission. There will, based upon what is here, pickleball will never exist again at that facility based upon this, what we know today. So, I want everybody to be very clear, this is for tennis courts, not pickleball courts. Whatever happens in the future, happens in the future. But today, if this is approved, it's just for tennis. So, I want to, avoidance of doubt, I want everybody to be very clear on that. And again, I second that, and I'll second his motion.
Was, was that an actual motion? And if so, would you include the condition that was requested to be added?
I'll include that condition and just, just to, to echo fellow commissioner here. Yeah, I mean, you, the staff and, and the city will have to really sum up those protocols down for, for what encompasses approval of pickleball. Because you'll have a, a lot of people coming to you on that. So, that, that's something that will, the staff will have to really get their arms around and be able to, to, to know what, you know, where, where's the parameter of approvals are going to be on this. But yes, I'll also include the additional amendment here. Yeah.
And I'm in agreement with that as well.
Call for a vote? Does anyone need a break or are we good to keep going here? Commissioners, we're good?
I'm good.
Okay. Just want to bring Commissioner Wigan back, assuming he's not asleep. We'll move on to item number four, our Bay Island General Plan Zoning Code LCP amendments, PA 2022-087. Site location is, once again, Bay Island. Staff, please proceed with your presentation.
Certainly. I'm going to go ahead and introduce Chelsea Craig, who's going to do the presentation. But one thing I wanted to kind of stress here, that I think this entire application can be seen through the lens, that we're basically reinstating an entitlement that was granted by the city council many years ago. And unfortunately, it was eliminated when we did a general plan update in 2006. So, I think with that introduction, Chelsea will go through some of the details of this and kind of share that with you and we'll go from there. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Kleiman and commissioners. Chelsea Craig with the Planning Commission, commi, whoa, commission, planning division. The project you have before you are the Bay Island amendments, as Jim has already previously mentioned. The slide you see in front of you is a map of Bay Island. Bay Island is a single legal property. It's operated as a stock co-op. And it has parking off-site at 501 West Bay. That site is highlighted in red on this image with the walking path also shown in red dashed line. The, the property is accessed by private pedestrian bridge only, so there are no vehicles allowed on the island. A little bit of background on Bay Island, it was developed originally as a recreational club and later became a residential island. In 1997, there was a use permit that was approved by council that did allow up to 25 residential units on the island. In 2006, there was a comprehensive general plan update and inadvertently, that number 25 units was changed to 23. And subsequently, the zoning code was updated also to be consistent with the general plan and the local coastal program as well, all were updated to show the 23 instead of the 25. These amendments before you are to return those 25 units that were previously entitled. The map here is the updated general plan map that would be updated to say 25 units instead of 23 dwelling units. This exhibit does look different than what was originally attached to the staff report. And the updated exhibits were distributed as additional materials yesterday and should be included in your packets today. The exhibit was updated for clarity, so the address numbers were removed, as well as the brown areas, which represent the multiple unit residential, the RM designation, were updated to show exactly where the buildings are entitled pursuant to that previous use permit. And also, the green space, OS, open space, was also updated to reflect what that use permit originally entitled. That same exhibit is shown in the zoning code with the same change from 23 to 25. And in the local coastal program, which shows our local, our zoning, our coastal zoning This project is exempt from CEQA pursuant to section 15303, class 3, which is for new construction or conversion of small structures. And the recommend, recommended action is to conduct a public hearing, find the project exempt, and adopt a resolution recommending approval to the city council of the project. Next step would be taking the project to the city council. It's tentatively scheduled at this time for October 11th. And then next would be submittal to the California Coastal Commission to review the change to the local coastal program. This concludes my presentation. There is, Coralie Newman is here representing the applicant, the Bay Island Club, which are also the property owners. And I am also available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from commissioners? Okay. Any ex-party communication? We'll start down there.
Yes, for the first time in my life, I got to walk on the island. And I was escorted by Coralie and we went over various properties on the site and then matched up with the map that we were just showing.
None?
None.
I spoke with the applicant.
I spoke with the applicant.
I received a message from the applicant's consultant. Okay, we will open the public hearing. I assume you have a presentation for us?
Good evening, Chairman Kleiman and members of the Newport Beach Commission, Planning Commission. My name is Coralie Newman. I'm a principal with Government Solutions. I'm proud to say that I'm a homeowner and a business owner here in Newport Beach. We're located at 901 Dove Street by the airport. We have no PowerPoint presentation tonight. Thank you very much, staff, for your overview. Chelsea's been very hard working on different things with Bay Island. And thank you, Mr. Campbell, for your clarification. That essentially, we've, we've read the staff report, we saw the new graphics. I do represent Bay Island and we're, we agree with the staff's recommendations. I guess just only one clarification that I would make is that it seems that there might be or has been some questions about parking because we had heard that there were community members that were concerned that we were adding something. I think Mr. Campbell has made that clear, we're not adding anything. We're just making this go back to the way it was, so to speak. And every house site, home site on the island does have two parking spaces in the off-site parking garage, which has 48 spaces. That's always been the way it is. That's not changing at all. So, the parking still meets that standard. One final thing, as this was a cooperative developed since 1903, obviously, a lot of things have changed in standards. New homes that have come into the city, the city staff has required that each home has a third parking space on its own property for, golf carts. So, they, they do have that, meet that standard. So, we are asking you to approve the staff's recommendation. We're happy to be here. And Michelle Dean, the vice president of Bay Island, is also here if you have any questions of them. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone up here have any questions? Do we have any members of the audience that would like to comment? Jim Mosher?
Thank you, Chair Kleiman, members of the commission. My name is Jim Mosher and I have two question comments. I have never been on Bay Island, so I, I was not totally understanding from glancing at the staff report here what the current status is. The request is for an allowance for 24 dwelling units and one caretaker dwelling unit. The question is, is the current status that there are 23 homes and a caretaker unit, so that there's currently 24, even though officially only 23 are allowed? Or what is the current status? And then the second question is actually not original to me. Somebody asked it of me this morning, so I'll just pass it along. And it is related to the parking issue that Coralie touched on. I think our parking standards have changed since the original use permit was issued in the 1990s. And if I'm reading our current zoning code correctly, for a multifamily development such as this, current standard is two units plus a half unit, half a space for guest parking. So, it would be 2.5 per unit. And if we have 25 units, that would, you know, it's like, well, well over the 50? And so, it's our, by our current standard, the parking structure that is available would be insufficient to park even the currently allowed number of dwellings that are there, let alone one or two extra ones. So, is that an issue? And I guess the practical question is, is there a problem with the size of the current parking structure? Or has it proved adequate currently? So, it, it appears it does not meet our current standard. It may have been okay in the 1990s and it might be working fine today. I just do not know. Thank you.
Are there any other comments from the public at this time? Seeing none, staff, did you want to respond to Mr. Mosher's question?
Relating the status of the caretaker's unit, that, that structure is currently being utilized as a clubhouse. So, there are 23 single-family residences currently developed on the property. And then that caretaker's unit is currently utilized as a clubhouse. As far as parking, parking goes, it's correct, there are 48 spaces in that off-site parking structure. And the use permit allow, or the use permit required those 48 spaces, two spaces per single-family residence. And at the time, yes, it didn't consider the caretaker's residence. Any new development that comes in today is subject to coastal development permit. So, a few coastal development permits have been reviewed at the zoning administrator and the planning commission level over the past few years. And those coastal development permits are individually looked at for parking consistency. So, single-family residences over 4,000 square feet require three parking spaces. Coralie touched on that and requiring the onsite golf cart space. If it's a smaller, single-family residence, then only two parking spaces are required per today's code.
Great, thank you. At this time, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back up to the commission for discussion or a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve. I'll second.
Call for a vote? Moving on to the next item, item number five, general plan circulation element update, PA 2017-141. Location, citywide.
Okay, good evening, Chair Kleiman, planning commissioners. My name is Tony Bryant. I'm the city traffic engineer. This is the update to the circulation element. This has been a long time coming. The last time we came to the planning commission was about, what was last year sometime, just to give you an update and talk about the document that we have been working on. So the circulation element itself is a planning document, a transportation planning document, and it establishes the long-term vision for transportation planning and mobility in the city. It's important to note that it's a policy document. It's not a project document. I've heard the public come to us in the past saying, you know, can you incorporate a sidewalk here? Can you build a, you know, a one-way street? Or can you make this a one-way street? Or something specific. It's not a specific construction project document. It's a statement of intent. It's to pursue goals towards implementing mobility improvements. Any specific projects would, would be part of the CIP and not this document. This goes back to January of 2020, when the city council directed staff to do the housing element update as part of RENA, but also to directed staff to do a simultaneous update of the circulation element to meet state mandates and laws that should be incorporated in the circulation element. And then in April 2020, a contract was approved to work with LSA Associates in the preparation of the circulation element update. Tonight, we have Tony Petros with LSA Associates, and he'll be here to answer any questions you might have. He's more than available to, to answer on to hopefully my information. So again, the planning commission review, there actually was a total of eight planning commission meetings where this topic was discussed, going all the way back to November of 2020, when we first presented to you what the 2006 circulation element, the existing circulation element is. And then we worked our way through until March of the next year, where we presented to you the draft of the circulation element. There's been a lot of public involvement in this project, starting back in November of 2020, and we've actually had five public workshops, and they were virtual workshops because of COVID. But they were very well attended. We have, on average, 40 to 40-plus attendees on these virtual workshops, so we received a lot of input. In March 2021, we initial, the initial draft of the document was posted on the city website, and we received a lot of comments. We went back and had another fifth workshop to discuss with the public what the draft comments were and changes we had made to the document at that time. The reason why we're coming back, and it's been some time since we've discussed this document, is essentially between the spring of 2021 and summer of this year, we've really only made minor revisions to the document. The council has, you know, correctly focused on getting that housing element across the finish line, making sure it met the state's requirements and approval through HCD. And so the council said, let's kind of put the circulation element off to the sidelines, bring it back once we get to that point. So that's why we're here at this point in time. In July of this year, we posted the final document on the city website for review. So it's important to say that this is a community document. A lot of input from the public went towards all the new policies and the updated policies. Pretty much every policy was involved with public input. New goals and policies, again, based from the public, but also comments that you, as the planning commissioner, had made to us in the past, were incorporated into the language and changes and additions and new policies that were added. Importantly, this document incorporates the mandates of state law with these goals and policies, and it's also consistent with overall regional transportation planning. So these are the mandates of state law. AB 1358 is the Complete Streets Act of 2008. Now, remember that the existing circulation element is from 2006. This is an act from 2008. It requires the cities, by law, to amend their circulation elements to plan for a multimodal network, so to include pedestrians, cyclists, motorists, children, seniors, transit, et cetera. Plan for all of that as part of the network, as part of Complete Streets. The vehicle miles traveled, we brought that to the planning commission in the past for approval. That's the new CEQA metric, as you know, for, for studying traffic impacts. That's very important, that that be incorporated into the circulation element as well. And then there are Senate bills that touch on global warming and climate protection, and this includes new policies, this document, to address climate action goals for reducing greenhouse gas, and doing that through policies of transportation planning. So some of the key policies, what we're trying to do, and we, we got a lot of comments from the public on e-bikes and conflicts between e-bikes, and we still have that discussion with the public on, a lot of comments through the workshops. So there are policies in here now to, to look at ways of minimizing the conflicts between e-bikes, other bikes, e-bikes and pedestrians, e-bikes and motorists, ways that we can look at doing that either through the way that we can control sidewalks and who can ride on a sidewalk, adding new bike lanes, widening sidewalks. There's different ways of looking at trying to reduce those conflicts. Requiring bike amenities and new developments, so that can be bike racks, lockers, et cetera. Reviewing parking requirements in municipal code, this is something that I know planning is going to be bringing forward for discussion with city council. The Complete Streets Master Plan, that's a very important new policy in the document. There will be a Complete Streets Master Plan, similar to the Bicycle Master Plan that we have, but looking at the entire city for Complete Streets and potential improvements. Safety was a big issue for the public in a lot of the discussions, so we're looking at, there's a policy that we, it's, it's a nationwide system called the Safe System Approach, and it looks at a lot of different ways to improve safety on streets. So what we're proposing in the policies is doing an annual safety review of all the streets in the city, and then looking for improvements that can be made. One of the other topics, monitoring land development in adjacent jurisdictions, that'd be reviewing their EIR's traffic studies. Regular school coordination meetings. In fact, we've got a school coordination meeting on this Monday coming up, so this is something that just documents what we have been doing with the school district, just a continuation of that. And then we're also including and be developing an emergency evacuation map, and that'll be part of the document. The Bicycle Master Plan, it's a standalone document today, but we're going to fully incorporate the Bicycle Master Plan now into the circulation element. And that's important because we can start to review that against projects being in the CIP. It, it's something that's never been part of the overall city transportation planning. It's just been a standalone project document. We're looking at curbside management, ways of having drop-off zones and valet delivery zones. There've often been times and problems we've had, specifically on the peninsula in the summer, where Uber and taxis, et cetera, just stopping in the travel lane and just dropping people off and causing congestion. So we're trying to develop a policy for improving that. Autonomous vehicles, looking to the future, what type of improvements can we incorporate into, say, the, the street system or the traffic signal equipment, doing infrastructure communication improvements? More electric vehicle charging stations, putting them on city property, which we know we, we control city property, so we can incorporate more. But then incentivizing private development to incorporate EV stations on, on their property. And this is very important. As part of this update, we're not planning any changes at this time to the master plan of streets and highways. That's going to happen during the traffic study for the land use element. So as the land use element's being prepared, then the full traffic analysis will be done to incorporate the RENA housing that was part of that, and also any land use changes during that element. And that's when you properly do your traffic study and analysis, and that's when you look at potential changes to the master plan. So this is in summary, the basis for approving the update at this time, because there have been questions as to that you're looking at goals and policies, but you're not looking at the master plan. Well, this is important to approve it and the goals and policies at this time, because we need to incorporate the policy, the state law for Complete Streets. And we want to avoid potential legal issues by not having that state law in our circulation element. It, it's something that should be in the circulation element. If we go longer, and the longer that we go without having it in the document, the, the more potential issues there could be. The state, when I say the state, Caltrans, is now starting to become more involved in reviewing local development plans. So when they start reviewing local development plans, they're going to say, is your circulation element, is the project consistent with your circulation element? And they'll look to, you know, things such as VMT, is your, is VMT in your circulation plan? If it's not, well, we're going to comment on that, and that's going to be an issue for, as far as the state and Caltrans reviewing it. So we want to make sure that the VMT policy that we have is fully incorporated into the, the circulation element. Again, this is, has new goals and policies that meets the global warming, climate change, Senate bills. And also, very importantly, the new goals and policies that have been added and revised. A lot of public input, and we've included all of that, as I mentioned, in trending topics. We've included that all. That's current interests of the community for what they'd like to see in transportation planning, and that's all part of it as well. So the recommendation tonight is to adopt the resolution, to recommend the adoption of the circulation element update to the city council. And the future plan right now is to go back to the city council with a study session to discuss this document on October the 11th, and then at the following meeting, October 25th, receive the city council review and, and adoption. So if you have any questions, I'm available. And also, as I mentioned, Tony Petros with LSA is here tonight.
Great, thank you. Thank you for all the work you've done on this. It's, when you see it in black and white, how many meetings you've hosted and how much community outreach you've done on this. It's commendable, so thank you for all of that. Are there any questions from commissioners? Commissioner Wagon?
Yeah, Tony, you mentioned it a little bit on the evacuation zones. What's the timeframe on that? I, I know some residents in Newport Coast are pretty concerned about a lot of fire-related issues, and they've been working with the city's fire marshal on trying to figure out evacuation routes, you know, should there be a fire. What, you know, can they expect as far as a timeframe when the safety element would be, with maps, would be completed?
Right. And, and as I mentioned, that would be part of the safety element update, which is coming, you know, at the same time, I believe, perhaps, with the land use element, same timeframe. But, I mean, this is something we can start to have discussions with the, the fire marshal on, on maps. I know I've had that conversation with him about evacuation maps and the safety element. So we put our policy in to say that it should be incorporated, there should be development of evacuation maps. So that's something I think it's probably not bad to get that discussion started with the fire marshal.
Okay, great. Yeah, I think they just had a recent community meeting, about 150 residents showed up, and they were working really well with Kevin Bass as our fire marshal. And so I think if maybe you could be a part of those discussions, I think there's a resident here tonight that might mention it during public comments, but they have some proposals. I think there's a way to perhaps work with the Crystal Cove Conservancy partner with them. So I don't know if that's mentioned in the, I know you have mentioning with, working with our partners at OCTA and the toll roads and different government entities, but I don't know if there's any mention of, of working with maybe landowners that are potential evacuation routes.
Right. Now, we would definitely be working with the fire marshal, the fire department on preparing the plan.
Great. And, I mean, I had some others that were more specific, but you said this wasn't really a specific document. This is more a general document. So I think the only one that maybe could be expanded on was the city station that's off Industrial and Superior. It has natural gas, but I was wondering if that could be expanded to include hydrogen and electric charging, fast electric charging. Is there, I kind of heard maybe rumblings that there had been some discussions of that? Is that something that this element would specifically get into, or is that more of a, way more of a general document?
I, I think this is more of a general document. I think we are planning, or at least we're proposing EV charging stations, but I, I think we could have the discussion on hydrogen as well. We could perhaps change a policy to add not just EV, but discuss hydrogen before it goes to council.
Yeah, I think hydrogen is, I drive one, so I'm, maybe I'm biased, but I do think it's a new part of technology that is, is part of Calif, State of California's master plan of, of being fuel efficient, or not fuel efficient, but relying on less fossil fuels. So it's part of the equation, so I think it should be added. Thank you.
Any other commissioners? Okay, I have one or two questions. Actually, one was really more of a clarification. Obviously, we've had some discussions in the past about the, the widening of Pacific Coast Highway through Mariners Mile, and I just wanted to touch on that and have you clarify that that's just for consistency, you know, with the regional plans and not, doesn't actually mean that we're committing to one.
That, yeah, that's correct. It, to have it as a six-lane facility is consistent with the county master plan. And so we're required to keep that consistency between our master plan and the county master plan. So just because it's shown as a six-lane on the, you know, on the overall master plan doesn't mean we're, we're going to start building a six-lane facility tomorrow. It just means that you, you need to plan for it when you do your, you know, transportation planning in, in the region and in our city, but it definitely doesn't mean that we're going to start building six lanes.
Great. Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that for the public. And then you also mentioned loss of funding. Is that something we are anticipating, or it's just?
It, well, what would happen is that you have to maintain that consistency with the county master plan, and they, they tie funding back to that. So if we're inconsistent, then we would, we would lose funding for street improvements and intersection improvements, et cetera, if we're not consistent. So that's, that's an important part of that.
And then, there was a point, maybe, I don't know, two years ago, where I think you mentioned that we had realigned some of the traffic signals, because, I don't know if it was regional or state law, or something had changed that triggered this changeover, and then that kind of altered traffic patterns along PCH a little bit is...
Well, again, coast highway in the city, there's, we own a portion of it from Jamboree to Newport Coast. The rest of it is the state. We try to work with the state on coordinating the signals, so it, it's a regular communication between ourselves and Caltrans to, to maintain that coordination of the signals. But reviewing the signal timing for us on our signal system is, is a regular, we're constantly doing that.
Okay, great. Yeah, so a lot of this document is about consistency.
Right.
Thank you. No other questions from commissioners? We take public comments? Are there any members of the public who would like to speak on this item?
Chair Kleiman, members of the planning commission, my name is Jim Mosher. I was impressed by the slide showing all the reasons why we are wanting to adopt this However, to me, it seems like it's nothing more than a placeholder for some ultimate circulation element that would be part of the comprehensive general plan update that we are embarking on, because my understanding is all the elements of a general plan have to be integrated, work together, be consistent with one another. As a rather trivial example, you will find throughout these policies, they reference a little in parentheses after them, parentheses imp, this and that. Those are references to what is called the Implementation Program, part of our general plan, which is apparently referring to the one from 2006 in the comprehensive update. That will presumably be revised. That will presumably be revised and updated and made better than it is now. So I don't know if those references will remain consistent. And also, it bothers me in the current circulation element that we have from 2006, which was part of a comprehensive update. It anticipated and illustrated things like intersection improvements that would be needed over the life of the plan adopted in 2006 to accommodate the growth that was anticipated in that plan. The current one, as Tony said, it's just policies. It does not give the public or any reader of the general plan any concept of what those consequences of those policies might be when they are integrated with the other things, such as the big development that will be added by the housing element. I would assume that we're going to need to make some changes to the circulation to accommodate that. You can't guess from here what that would be. We see the policy, but not the consequence of what the policy will be. And then it does still have some residual details in it, even though it is supposedly a policy document. As an example, I can point out on page 35, we see policy 2.1.2, which commits the city to building the development that's shown on our master plan of streets and highways, which we've been told, and I didn't understand the reason of this. At this time, we're not updating it, we're committing to it, but not updating to it. When I open this plan, I see on it, for instance, the roads through Banning Ranch and the 19th Street Bridge. And, but I've heard we're trying to maintain consistency, but when I look today at the OCTA's master plan of arterial highways, the so-called MPA for Orange County, the 19th Street Bridge is no longer there. And they have rerouted the Bluff Road that was going to go through the middle of Banning Ranch. It's now at the edge, and it connects up to Victoria Street. So our map here that we're committing to is not consistent with the current county planning. So to me, this is just an interim placeholder document. It's not a final one, thank you.
Thank you, are there any other comments? Being done, we will close the public hearing. Any other questions or comments from the commission? Or a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
A second.
Call for vote?
The motion carries unanimously.
Moving on to item number eight, study session, excuse me, item number six, under our study session, residential care facility PA 2021-292. Again, location citywide, staff?
Yes, good evening. Chair Kleiman, members of the commission, my name is Jaime Moriel, principal planner. And we just wanted to take this opportunity for this study session to provide the Planning Commission a little bit of background regarding the city's efforts regarding residential care facilities. Also provide a little bit of background regarding the state and federal laws that govern the city and our ability to regulate residential care facilities. A little overview of our existing regulations, recent efforts of the city council, created residential care ad hoc committee. And then, a quick overview of the proposed amendments that the Planning Commission will be reviewing at the next agenda on September 22nd. So it's really in preparation for your review of our proposed amendments at that next agenda. So when we discuss residential care facilities, we're really looking at two different types of facilities, licensed and unlicensed facilities. And the typical residential care facilities that we hear about are mainly the drug and alcohol treatment facilities, and these are licensed by the Department of Healthcare Services. Services that can be provided within these homes is detoxification, group and individual counseling, and recovery and treatment planning. Mental health homes are another growing trend, and these are referred to as social rehab facilities, and these are actually licensed by the Department of Social Services. And they provide 24-hour care, counseling onsite and offsite. Really intended to be transitional. When we refer to unlicensed facilities, these are sometimes referred to as sober living homes. And these homes are not allowed to provide any treatment services onsite that would be required to be licensed from the state. These are really intended to be transitional for recovering individuals to live in a sober living environment. The city's ability to regulate these are kind of governed by state and federal laws, and primarily the Fair Housing Act and American Disabilities Act. These require that the city provide individuals with any disability an equal opportunity to use and enjoy dwelling. And it's unlawful for the city to utilize any way these policies are enacted, any zoning regulations that would treat persons with disabilities any different than groups of, or non-disabled persons. So, drug and alcohol addiction is considered a disability under the law. So, any person that's recovering from an addiction to drugs or alcohol are considered disabled. But just to be clear, the act does not protect persons who are currently using illegal drugs. Another important fact to mention is that any licensed facilities for six or fewer occupants are essentially protected, and the city must treat them as a single-family use in California. And the city cannot enact any zoning requirement to any of these facilities that are not applied to other single-family homes in the same zoning district. And so this applies to all cities throughout California. Let's just provide a little bit of background. In early 2000s, the city and throughout the state, group homes were on the rise. There was definitely an over-concentration and lack of regulations occurring throughout the state. In 2007, 2008, the city had a total of 614 total beds, which consisted of 26 facilities that were licensed and 55 facilities that were unlicensed. So in 2008, the city did adopt a new ordinance to regulate these facilities, did establish locational requirements, updated regulations for compliance with fair housing laws, and it also added a reasonable accommodation provision and process. Reasonable accommodations point, Fair Housing Act requires that all jurisdictions provide reasonable accommodation to allow any disabled person equal access to housing. Reasonable accommodations can be requested to deviate from any zoning standard, and these are reviewed on a case-by-case determination. And there's very specific findings that must be made to deny these. But overall, the city of Newport Beach classifies residential care facilities as various subtypes. So in that first row is what we refer to as limited licensed, which is for six and fewer occupants. As I mentioned, under state law, the city must allow for these facilities in all residential zoning districts. Unlicensed facilities for six or fewer, or any facility for seven or more, the city has a little bit more latitude. And so, and within our zoning district, we prohibit these within the single-family and two-family zoning districts. But they are permissible in the multi-family zoning districts with the approval of a conditional use permit by a hearing officer. Integral facilities are similarly regulated. Integral facilities would consist of two or more unlicensed or larger facilities operating as essentially one facility. And then parolee probation on our homes are prohibited throughout the various residential zoning districts. Since 2008, the number of beds and facilities in the city has decreased. As you can see, in 2007, we had a total of 614 beds. Today, it's 210 beds and only 30 facilities. We have approved and denied a number of use permits, reasonable accommodations in zoning agreements, primarily dealing with the early facilities that we had in early 2000s. But just to point out that since 2009, all new facilities in the city have been those state-licensed facilities for six or fewer occupants. And again, that's primarily because the city cannot regulate them. And then, a little bit of background on the creation of the ad hoc committee. Unfortunately, last year, there was the tragic event where a client within one of the homes was shot by a neighboring property owner. And that kind of stirred up the need to relook at residential care. And so on October 26th, the city council created the residential care facilities ad hoc committee. And their goal was to review local standards to make sure they're kind of up to date with best practices and consistent with state and federal law. They were reviewing possibilities to make legislative changes and petition for changes at the higher levels of government, and review and recommend code enforcement protocols and updates that the city can enact. And then on January 11th, the city council initiated the code amendment that you'll be reviewing at the next agenda. As far as their outreach, they have met several times with various state, county, and local representatives to educate themselves, as well as the other agencies, and to see what possible changes are available. They've held multiple meetings with residents and various outreach efforts, which would be ongoing. Kind of the main takeaway from the committee's outreach is that there's definitely a need for stronger state oversight and legislative changes that they're going to continue to push for. But with regards to zoning, our regulations do warrant some updates to keep up with best practices. In dealing with best practices, city of Costa Mesa is commonly pointed to as a city that's updated their regulations to be as protective as possible for the community character. And so this table, it's a little difficult to read, but it's essentially a comparison between the city of Newport Beach and Costa Mesa's regulations. So you can see on that top row, the six or fewer occupants that are licensed by the state, those are not regulated in Newport Beach, and they're equally not regulated in Costa Mesa. With regards to the licensed facilities that are seven or more, or unlicensed, they also require discretionary review. So similarly, Newport Beach will require a conditional use permit, and Costa Mesa, they require either a conditional use permit or a special use permit. One thing I just want to point out is within that special use permit, that is for what they call sober living homes, or what we refer to as the six or fewer unlicensed. If you remember in that earlier slide, the city of Newport Beach does not permit six or fewer unlicensed in single-family or two-family zones, only in multi-family. However, Costa Mesa does allow them in all residential zones. One particular difference is in the separation requirements. So again, for six and fewer occupants that are licensed, neither city can require a separation requirement. However, for the other classifications, Newport Beach's separation requirements are a little complex. They're based on varying block width or length and number. It's very discretionary, whereas Costa Mesa has a very clear and objective standard of 650 feet, which is something we are recommending to incorporate within our amendment. The efforts of the ad hoc committee and the proposed amendments were kind of stalled for a while, while the city staff was working with the State of California Housing and Community Development Department in updating our housing element update. As you all are aware, the six-cycle housing element was being reviewed by the state. And one of the issues that had to be addressed and that HCD was pushing for was a program to remove constraints for housing for persons with disabilities. And they specifically identified our ordinance as a potential constraint. And they were requesting that we incorporate a program to actually remove our conditional use permit process. Obviously, that process is important to the city in order to kind of balance fair housing law and the need to protect community character. And so we were able to eventually work with HCD to incorporate a policy that says we would amend our ordinance to promote objectivity and greater approval certainty, but we're able to retain our conditional use permit process. And so, taking into account the comments received from HCD and the work efforts of the ad hoc committee, we will be proposing a number of amendments to our existing ordinance. Again, these amendments will only apply to the seven or more facilities or the unlicensed facilities. And so we are recommending to incorporate a more objective 650-foot separation requirement. In terms of our management and operational standards, we are incorporating a requirement for nuisance response plans, visitation policies, and relapse plans that should be incorporated and abided by. With regard to the concern about discharge of clients, there's a lot of concern that a lot of these facilities are simply evicting clients or not providing them with appropriate care after they're released from these facilities. And so, the amendments will require a discharge plan and a requirement that they provide transportation to these clients. If any clients would be evicted, prior to the eviction, within 48 hours, they have to notify the city and also put them in contact with the county care service. And then, an acknowledgement would have to be signed by that client and provided to the city. There's concern about a lot of these unlicensed facilities portraying themselves as providing licensed care. And so the requirement would be to prohibit any licensed facilities from advertising any services that require a license, either onsite or offsite. To comply with state law, there's a number of clarification and updates that would be added to the definitions of these uses. And then lastly, to kind of further the housing element policy, the review process would reduce a number of the required findings. So, any of these facilities have to provide, go through a conditional use permit process. So the standard conditional use permit findings would apply, and then there'd be additional findings for any use permit within a residential district. What we found, there's a lot of repetitive findings or subjective findings. And so to comply with that housing element policy, we would recommend reducing and streamline that review process. And then lastly, there would be a small change to our local coastal program, and that really only focuses on updating the definitions. But that concludes my presentation. And again, this is all in preparation for the next Planning Commission meeting on September 22nd. Within that staff report, the draft code amendments will be provided with red line strikeouts. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Jaime. I was just commenting earlier about how you get all the really fun projects to take on. I know you inherited this one, so we appreciate all the work that you did, and will continue to do. Any questions? Commissioner Wiegand?
Thank you, Jaime. I've had the honor of working with Senator Pat Bates for the last eight years, and she's been very much on top of this issue since day one, and has proposed a lot of state legislative proposals that have either failed or, in recent cases, been successful. So, I'm pretty well-tuned on this topic, and I'm happy to see that we're discussing it. I kind of come up with six suggestions that could be part of a proposal, seeing that you've tackled several of them. I'm happy to see that, and I know some residents here are in attendance to maybe discuss some of those as well, if that makes them satisfied with some of these that Costa Mesa had put forth. Related to, in addition to the 650-foot, is there any discussion, or have you had any talk about 1,000-foot distance for any state-licensed housing, regardless of it being issued from Department of Social Services or Department of Healthcare Services? Meaning, you know, you have senior concrete care facilities, you have terminal ill/hospice care that is out there. You have some for youth hostel-type settings. So, you know, essentially, you could have a whole host of these similar types on one street or in a neighborhood. So, you know, I'm just curious, you know, this would reduce the likelihood of, you know, enclaves of disadvantaged, which would disadvantage the occupants, so you have so many in one setting. Has there been any discussion when it comes to, you know, having a list or, you know, a separation between those other type of facilities that the state does license? a separation between those other type of facilities that the state does license?
As currently proposed, the separation would be from any use that meets the definition of a residential care facilities. And that definition has been updated, or would be updated, to include anything that's in the community. Let me get the correct terminology. Anything under the California Community Care Facilities Act. And so that does cover a number of different facilities, such as mental health, residential or alcohol and drug rehab, and several others. I don't think that would include, like, congregate care or senior-type care, but more recovery-type care.
Because, you know, under current standards, multiple recovery residents can be on the same street next to detoxes and other state-licensed facilities, such as elder care, and would then make that whole city be, you know, a business district.
Correct.
Or that whole street be a business district.
Right. And again, if it's a licensed facility for six or fewer, we're not able to regulate or apply any separation standards. So this would apply for those larger facilities. And then as part of the findings for those larger facilities, it does require the hearing officer to consider compatibility with the character surrounding the neighborhood, but it does look at proximity to parks, schools, and other conditionally permitted uses of same or similar types. So that's what it's currently looking at as part of the review process.
Okay. And then, did you guys get a chance to look what Commissioner Viejo did recently in that one of their ordinances that they put that maintains a list of recovery residences in the city, so requires homes to register with the city to ensure compliance? So do we have, like, a list of those that are both licensed and unlicensed?
If they're applying for a facility that's unlicensed or seven or greater, they are required, as part of their application process, to list all of the facilities they operate within the city and then within the state.
And how about those that are un? Do we have, you know, what, do we have a mechanism to find the unlicensed?
So from an enforcement action, so we don't have, if there's unlicensed, we do enforcement action, so we don't have any current unlicensed. We do have some of our kind of legacy uses that were litigated and under a separate settlement agreement, and those are from 10 years ago. But currently, we don't have any unlicensed. And if we do have a new unlicensed that does show up, it's enforcement action. We don't allow them. We prohibit them.
Cities can notify recovery businesses, licensed and unlicensed. So do we have a program in place where we can annually ensure compliance with state and federal laws? So the state and the county are supposed to have databases set up for these facilities. I don't know how well the county's doing as far as updating that database, but I think we should be able to notify these businesses annually and so that they can ensure some type of compliance. Has that been thought of?
I believe that there's been state legislation that's been considered or bounced around for that possibility. I know that we, or some of the work that's been done with the state, there was some inspections that were completed by the state earlier on, and I don't know if that's fallen off at this point in time. But I know that that is a possibility in terms of state legislation.
Yeah, because, I mean, notifying the businesses that they must submit the data, it should be able to create some transparency to the business and ensure, you know, our bad actors aren't in our neighborhoods. You know, maybe they would skirt those rules, but if we're reminding them of the rules annually, maybe that will help curtail some of the behavior.
Let us definitely take a look at that.
And then, you know, there is a patient bill of rights that exists in the state, and there are some modifications that can be made to it. So I would suggest, you know, creating for some of these facilities, a patient bill of rights that must be posted in every treatment center's bathroom. And some of those would state, "All detox residents in California must be state-licensed." So, you know, if you're providing treatment, you need to be licensed. You can't be in a group home with a bunch of individuals who are recovering and receiving treatment unless you're licensed. You can't be unlicensed. So, you know, having that bill of rights would, these three ideas that I've come up with, would help curtail some of these behaviors in these homes that are trying to skirt the rules and being unlicensed by providing treatment. Another one would be Newport Beach residents that have more than six tenants sleeping on the property must have a CUP posted in the house. Otherwise, you're entitled to live in a house with no more than six adults. And the third would be, if you believe your housing is more crowded than allowed, contact code enforcement with the physical address of the property by calling whatever 949 number we've got for the city. So in having those three things there, if you're a patient, you would say, "Oh, well, I should, I'm in a home that's not providing treatment. I should not have more than six people in this house." And so it gives them an opportunity then to call the city and then say otherwise. And then the city now is aware of that location, thus adding to that database.
We can certainly look at that option as well.
One of my ideas was to have what you did, that Costa Mesa had, that required businesses that send people out on the streets, gives them a plan to keep them off the streets. Because a lot of these places will advertise Newport Beach as this wonderful place to come get clean and healthy. Sunshine, the beach, nice weather. And then when their insurance runs out, they kick them to the curb, and then they're left out on our street. So I think that adds to our homeless population. So I think this is a good idea to have that. Lastly, you kind of touched on it, but I think we could maybe go a little further, but perhaps there's, we can create a website or something on our city that explains what citizens can complain about if they know what to complain about in respect to group homes, and maybe have a form that they can file, you know, fill out for complaints to the city. So that gives them an opportunity to voice their concerns directly without having to call a number that maybe they get either not called back, and I'm not saying that that happens, but it gives at least something they can look up to say, "Oh, well, are they doing X, Y, and Z? This may trigger your complaint." But if they're doing this, that is allowable, and you can't complain about it. You know, just an education tool online. That's all I had. Thank you.
That's all? Anyone else? Okay, are there any public comments on this item?
Hi, good evening. My name's Derek Davis, and I'm responding to a notice I got. City officials will be presenting their proposed changes to the groups, city groups' home ordinance at this meeting. The changes could have the unintended consequence of encouraging the establishment of more group homes in Newport Beach residential neighborhoods. So my story is, my family moved here in 1967. My, I, my brother and sister, we all went through the Newport Mesa School District. After I graduated, it took me 20 years to be able to afford to live back here again. And we bought a house on Vista Baya and raised our children. And they've grown up now, and they're having their own kids, and they're bringing the grandkids back to see us. As well as on our block, there's a lot of the traditional baby boomers are moving out, and we're getting really nice millennial families in, and they've all got young kids. And I would suggest to you that we don't, for safety purposes, I know, I'm surprised more of my neighbors aren't here, because we were outraged by this thing that's going in on Vista Baya, that we don't feel safe. So I can imagine you've got state mandates that you have to comply with. I get it. But there's got to be parts of the city that don't have small, young families that you could find appropriate housing to help these people. And don't put them in neighborhoods where you've got small children. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on this agenda item?
Madam Chairman, Planning Commissioners, so I am a resident that potentially could be, of Newport Beach, that could be impacted by a group home. And what really concerns me, and I'm a neighbor, actually, of the gentleman that just spoke, is that this particular operator has, in the course of trying to prepare this home as a group home, committed various violations of the Newport Beach building codes. I mean, various, plus having workers at all hours of the night there, which again is against the city's regulations. So as a neighbor, I think we've lost complete trust in, you know, this operator's ability to operate that home safely. And there's 40, I'll just mention too, there's 40 children in the immediate vicinity of this home. So it kind of, well, it gives us all pause to think that this operator, again, who has committed multiple violations of the building code, would operate a facility for mentally ill people, potentially with some violent backgrounds. I think we were told by the DSS that potentially it could have sexual predators as well. So this is a subject of great concern for the residents, and I just hope that as we go through this process, I know the ordinance is very, very detailed, it's taken a lot of time, I think, to draft. So to redraft it, I just would ask that there is lots of time allocated for public review, for discussion, for input, and just make sure it's completely vetted so that all potentially impacted residents, and also, you know, making sure that the, you know, well, that the patients who will occupy these facilities are also, you know, they're vulnerable. So how are they going to be protected? And, you know, I appreciate the Commissioner's ideas. I think he's got some great ideas there that should be followed up on. But again, this is a matter of great concern, so I would strongly urge, there's plenty of time to go through these. Any proposed changes to or amendments that the public fully understand, that they're vetted, and that we have an ordinance that is the gold standard, you know, for California, that protects both the vulnerable patients as well as, you know, the residents.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Chair Clyman, members of the commission, my name is Jim Mosher, and my comment tonight is just procedural and closely related to part of the previous comment. I would note that this afternoon, Mr. Murillo sent out an email posting the proposed local coastal program amendment language, the red line strikeout for that, that presumably is what is going to be considered at your meeting two weeks from now. I know that in the past, the city staff has sometimes had a very fluid idea of what a posted proposal is, and so the question is, is that indeed what you will be reviewing two weeks from now, or could it be changed by two weeks from now? And if that is the proposal for that little part of this that will be reviewed two weeks from now, is the other part also as final as that? So as the previous gentleman mentioned, that could be perhaps posted a little bit in advance of your normal Friday before the meeting? If it is already what is going to be presented two weeks from now, why not post that somewhere online so that the public has a chance to see it? As the previous commenter mentioned, the devil often is in the details, and the details need to be carefully reviewed. And this is a complicated subject, and how the details are interpreted could be complicated in this case. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher.
Chair, members of the Planning Commission, Denise Albermann. Thank you for agreeing to consider this ordinance. I wanted to provide very brief background on this very complex subject and the ordinance that the city currently has in place. That ordinance was produced as a result of some significant overconcentration that evolved earlier in the 2003 to 2006 period, associated with the lack of regulation of these various group residential uses. So at this point in time, there was, there was a very careful CUP process that was embedded in that ordinance, and, you know, by most of our accounts, it was very diligently administered. So it was fair to the individuals with disabilities, and also gave careful consideration to the impacts, availability of housing and care, et cetera. So it was very fair and reasonable, and it was quite detailed. So I'm not entirely certain there is anything wrong with our current ordinance that cost the city hundreds of thousands of dollars to develop in partnership with the community that privately Residence Group contributed over $500,000 to help with the development of that ordinance. I was asked to be a member of the current ad hoc committee, fast forwarding to now, because there has been renewed abuse on the part of various business operators to develop facilities, the lion's share of which are integral. They leverage single, six-and-under, stated to be six-and-under licensed facility, which has certain protections, and then they combine that in their effective, in their actual operations with other unlicensed facilities. So that, that's a giant loophole and does not appear to have been addressed in the outline that we just saw this evening from staff. By the way, as members of the ad hoc committee, we don't know when the commission actually received the staff report behind this outline, but the ad hoc committee has received nothing, including any of the staff report that's here that ostensibly we're supposed to contribute and comment on as members of the ad hoc committee and the public. So I would ask, first of all, before there is any further consideration, that the ad hoc committee and members of the public have the chance to see what the staff's recommendations are. Are they in total what was on the outline there, or is that just a summary of a larger, more detailed report? We would really like to see it. The gentleman before commented on the need to vet it. We'd like to review it. We'd like to have the opportunity to thoughtfully respond to it, because this is a big issue, and there are things that local government can do to help to regulate these business operations in our residential areas. And it's important to do that, both for the integrity of the community at large and also individuals that have disabilities, so they can get the proper care. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on this item?
My name's Bill Finster, and I live, and Madam Chairman and former, or Commissioner, sorry about that. I live on Indus, which is where the fatality happened. It was a year ago, the 26th of August, and it's affected a lot of people in our neighborhood. We've got a lot of kids in the neighborhood, and there's just, I think there's five facilities in our neighborhood. But it's something that really has to be controlled. To see the people, the people that live there in the house across the street from me, a lot of people thought they'd move because of what happened. They're still there. They're not going anywhere. But the wife basically has PTSD from the whole thing. And something's got to give, and I think that the city really needs to investigate and get more information on what's going on with the facilities. And we just need a lot of control, because it's, with it, to strike at home again a year ago, it was two weeks tomorrow that it did happen, it's scary. I live, another thing that happened too, I don't know if he was in a drug rehab place or not, but in broad daylight, somebody tried to break into my home. I don't go out that front door anymore. This guy was stark-ass naked, trying to blow through my door. A cop got him, and I've never seen so many police department, you know, get there within minutes, because we're on a cultist act, but something needs to be done. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name's Erica Kane. I'm a resident of Newport Beach. I've lived here for four years after moving from San Francisco. Commissioner Wiegand, thank you for your recommendations and being an astute representative on the subject of group homes. on the subject of group homes, and thank you for your suggestions, like I said, tonight. Just a little bit of background, for the residents in Newport Beach, this is actually of grave concern, and it's a big issue. Unfortunately, just over a year ago, we learned of a social rehab facility coming to our neighborhood. This would be the first of its kind in Newport Beach, this is separate than what you have the drug and alcohol facilities. In our neighborhood, we have 42 children within a small distance of the proposed location. After learning about what happened in Santa Ana Heights, where a delusional man left in the middle of the night and was shot and killed by a neighbor, obviously it's of great concern. Since then, fast forward to today, we now have one social rehab facility that now has been licensed by the state in Corona Del Mar. We also have three additional facilities that are pending licenses with the city of Newport Beach. So that means in less than a year, we will have four social rehab facilities in Newport Beach. So I bring that to your attention, and I just share that information because this is a very serious subject matter. It's, again, of grave concern to the residents in Newport Beach, and I ask that we do everything possible that is within the law, of course, and is not being discriminatory, to protect not only the residents, but more importantly, protect the persons that are seeking treatment at these facilities. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Assuming there are no other comments. Staff, would you put up that breakdown, the numbers, over the last however many years? Thank you. So, just to clarify, these are all state approved or a combination?
It's a combination. So a lot of the early facilities were unlicensed. That zoning agreement box that you see, we have an agreement with, formerly was Sober Living by the Sea, I think now it's Sierra by the Sea, and so the city entered an agreement with them. They have a number of unlicensed facilities that they're able to continue operating. In exchange, they agreed to a number of like good neighbor policies and operating standards as well as agreeing to reduce the number of beds. So there are a number of unlicensed facilities still through that zoning agreement, or the reasonable accommodations that we have approved. And the remainder is licensed, yeah.
And so for new applications, to respond to the last comment we just heard, are we actually seeing new applications for seven or more, or is everything six or under going straight through the state?
Correct. Since 2009, every facility that has been, I don't know, created, but every new facility in the city has been a licensed facility for six or fewer occupants, including the last four that were mentioned by the last speaker.
And so that's just a process that they have to go through to kind of check the box, but there's no discretion, right? It's not something that you can deny, really?
Correct. We do require them to, well, we create a zoning clearance for those facilities so that we can keep track of them. We do create, on the website, we do have a map of all the known facilities that have licenses. But, yeah, there's no ability for the city to deny those homes.
Yeah, I mean, I just think it's really worth mentioning and repeating, because I think all of us commissioners, all of the members of the public we've heard from, and I'm sure anyone who will watch this later or has concerns about the subject generally, all share the same sentiment on the issue and the severity of all of the things that were talked about tonight and many other things as well. Problem is, as we just touched on, these are state approved, or this is something that the state has delineated or carved out as falling under a home, and most operators are going to go through the state process rather than try to go through the city process and have to go through these hurdles. So I think it's really important that everyone understand that, yes, you know, Costa Mesa has their ordinance, and we are modeling ours after theirs to make sure we have all these protections in place, but, you know, even Commissioner Weigand mentioned all of these things that you want to put on the walls in these facilities. But if they're not having to be permitted through our process, we really don't have much control, and that goes to any ordinance that we're working on. If these operators know that they're coming in doing six or fewer, they don't have to even look at our city standards. So our hands are really tied, and it's not that the city, not that us commissioners or council don't want to do more, but if those, if those parameters only apply to seven or more, and these operators are coming in and getting their license through the state for six or fewer, unfortunately, none of the things that we would like to see happen that give us more control will apply. So I just wanted to really make sure that that was clear. And again, it's not for lack of desire or effort. Commissioner Harris?
Just quickly, the 650-foot buffer, it's proposed, but we're roughly there anyway, right? Can you go back to that slide or just confirm which, what applies? And then...
Right, so...
What does it, oh, sorry, the second part would be, what does it take to be granted that license? And would it have to be operating to, you know, have that license applied to your property per se and have that buffer at least for that type? Would you have to operate a facility? And then how, you know, how onerous is it to get it, is expensive renewal, how often, things of that nature?
So, again, if it's a six or fewer occupant licensed by the state, there's no separation requirement that we can apply. Drug and alcohol licenses do not include a separation standard. My understanding is the mental health licenses do include a 300-foot separation, but that's applied by the state agency that's regulating those facilities. As far as what it takes to obtain a license, I can't speak to that, but, you know, it's a typical process, they would apply, and there's requirements that they would have to submit, and it goes through a review process through, you know, the various agencies that issue those licenses.
I guess hypothetically, if I was thinking about making my house an unlicensed, you know, facility, subject to the buffer zone, would I actually have to operate a facility? Or is there an application through the city that you are granted that buffer zone, that I'm the only one there now that can have that?
Oh, okay.
That's my question.
So if someone were to open an unlicensed facility, or was thinking to, they would be required to apply for a conditional use permit application or approval through the city, which would go through discretionary review process. So they'd submit the fee, I don't know exactly, $3,000, $4,000, submit public hearing mailing labels and plans. In our ordinance, there is a detailed list of submittal requirements, much more substantial than, you know, a regular development project, and that includes a lot of details regarding different plans, their facilities, a map of other facilities. And in that, we could apply the 600-foot separation to any other unlicensed facility or facility that's licensed but seven or more, we could then apply that separation standard.
And I just want to add, that would be in the multifamily zone, so single family and R2, as we commonly refer to it, it would not be allowed.
Commissioner Weigand?
And then who makes that determination? Is that at a community development level? Is that zoning administrator? Is that planning commission? Where does the...
Any conditional use permit within a residential zone is reviewed by a hearing officer. On appeal, then the city council would review that decision.
And then Costa Mesa's, does through a planning commission?
I believe so.
I think it does.
Yeah, except for the special use permit, then it's the director.
Got it, got it. You know, I wanted to kind of echo some of the public comment on this. You know, it's a pretty nuanced and complicated issue. Looking at our calendar in advance, September 22nd is when this is being asked to come back. I just think it's a little premature to come back that soon. I think, you know, I don't know if the ad hoc is necessarily needed to meet. Obviously, the council had done that, but, you know, I certainly think some council members should be asked if they want to bring that back for discussion, but, you know, the public needs to see this a little bit more. I didn't get, in my binder, a presentation of this. I don't know if that was intentional or if that was what, but I didn't get this in advance. I came up with these things, you know, knowing what I know about the issue, but the public then didn't get the same document that was presented tonight. So this is the first time that they're seeing it, and I guarantee you, there's a lot more than just that's here tonight, they just kind of caught wind of it. So, I think we need to at least discuss this in more in advance than coming up in two weeks. I'm not ready to vote on something and make a recommendation to city council in just two weeks, because some of the things I just brought up, I don't know if that takes more than two weeks to propose. I think there's other ideas out there too, and, you know, I'm sort of an expert, but I'm not completely an expert, and there are others that really are experts on this, and I think some are city residents, and I think they would be able to put some input into this in two weeks. I don't think there's enough time for them to fully look at an ordinance that is, right now is just a slideshow, and then be able to come up with those comments that our planning commission meeting, you don't never want to do something from the dais and make changes to something then. I think this at least warrants some more time and open discussion. Look, I want to get this resolved as soon as possible, but I want to do it in a correct way, and I want it to stand up to courts. A lot of these things get shut down in court, so we put all this work into it, and then a judge comes back and says, no, this is illegal. Or maybe we can look at it the opposite lens and say, oh, we didn't do enough and we could have done more. So I get it that we can have multiple cracks at it, but I want to get a win that sustains the course and helps all of our residents, and helps those that are in treatment facilities get the help that they need, because that's ultimately the goal, is to see it, but, you know, some of this might be a little too rushed, in my opinion.
Any other commissioners? I do think secondarily, as Commissioner Weigand mentioned, I know this is mostly focused on the ordinance, but the education component is a big part of it, and we heard from the residents, I think people need to understand what it is that they can call code enforcement about, as we kind of covered here, what are the things that you can be looking out for so that at least we have that tool in our toolbox, since our hands are so tied and we're so restricted with everything that the state has done on this. But I think we can all agree that this is one of the more frustrating issues that the city's dealing with at this time. Anyway, thank you, staff, again, for all the work that you've done on this. If there are no other comments from the Commission, we will move on. Staff and Commissioner items, item number seven, motions for reconsideration. This is just a study session, it's just discussion and public hearing. There's, yeah, there's no action being taken. Staff, do you want to outline the next steps?
As it stands, this was just for informational purposes at this point, and it's projected to come forward to the planning commission for a recommendation on code amendments to be considered and provided to the city council. That is the projected date, correct?
There are no motions for reconsideration at this time. Item number eight, report by our community development director.
Chair Lyman and the commissioners, we have, keep this report brief, I just want to let everyone know, we're taking the housing element, the amended housing element to the city council for adoption on the 13th of this month. We do have a letter from state housing and community development department indicating our housing element is certifiable, so we're going to get that adopted by council and obviously start implementing it. So that's at the next meeting. Additionally, on that agenda, we will have an item for the establishment of a general plan advisory committee going forward to help advise staff and the community and provide public forum for debate and discussion over the comprehensive update of the general plan. They'll also be looking at the Landis-Salem update, if you will, to implement the housing elements, and that's going forward to create that committee at the next city council meeting. It'll be constituted at a later date. And that's really all I have for you tonight. We do have two items on the next agenda, as you've noticed, we have a non-conforming code update, and then the public hearing on the residential care facilities coming forward at the next meeting.
Are there any potential date cancellations you wanted to mention?
Certainly, I can, if you look forward into October, we don't have any items slated for October 6th. So barring a need to bring one of the items on the 22nd forward on the 6th, then we would cancel that meeting. And then on October 20th, we do have one item scheduled, I do have an indication from one of my staff members that we will have another item scheduled for the 20th of October, so we do anticipate keeping that meeting date.
Okay, thank you, and congratulations on that certification. Are there any items, requests for matters which a planning commissioner would like to be placed on a future agenda?
I just wanted to ask, Yorbalinda was the first, are we the second then, or are we kind of a little thereafter?
So, City of Irvine was the second in the county, and so, you know, barring somebody adopting one that we're not aware of before the 13th, we might be the third.
Cool. Kudos to you guys, a lot of hard work put into that.
Thank you.
Okay, any requests for excused absences? Well, then we are adjourned.